If everyone's ready, we're going to gavel in the start of the meeting. Todd, are you ready? Okay. This meeting of the ISD Board of Education is called to order. Welcome, everyone, tonight. We are glad to have you on this May meeting. Can you believe it's the end of the school year? The first item of business is to improve the agenda. I will entertain a motion.
What about a motion?
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The motion carries. We don't have any requests for district citizens to speak this evening, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. The motion has a first and second. Dr. Hurl?
Thank you. Under consent agenda, you will see we have bills this month totaling $11,388,139.82. This compares to last year at $10,149,360.12. The added expense this month is really to be expected. First of all, you have your normal inflation, if you figure it 5% or so. Also, as we have every month, we will always see an increase in peers, PSRS, which is our retirement system contributions, because we have added employees since last year, as well as raises. Just as a reminder, PSRS, that loan is 29% that comes out of, that goes to the peer system of employee salaries. So half of it's the school district's responsibility, half of it is the employees. Also, we did see an uptick in our Blue Cross and Blue Shield payments. Just as a reminder, we are what's called modified cost plus, which is a form of self-funded. So we do pay our own claims. So we had about $400,000 more in claims for this month compared to last month. So the bills are, as what you would expect based upon inflation as well, particularly with our added expense for our Blue Cross and Blue Shield claims.
From this year over last year, do you have an approximate percentage of what each of those three things would contribute to that? Because it's about a million dollars difference. Do you have an idea of about?
Well, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, that would be, like I said, about $400,000 of it.
Well, I mean over last year at this time. You mentioned since over April, it was about $400,000 more.
Oh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield claims?
Yes.
Compared to last year?
Well, I'm just curious what increases would be contributed to that million dollars? Because it's, yeah, the May 2024 bills were about a million dollars less.
So if you look at, first of all, just regular inflation at 5%, which is pretty typical, that right there is a half a million of it. And then you go, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield claims were right at $400,000. Then you come in with things like the peers contributions, PSRS. So, you know, pretty quick you get up to about that one point. Well, it'd be about $1.24 million. Also, we have the approval to let bids for cap services for McKinney-Vento, private agency, and then any other student programs that we need. And this is something that we do usually every one to two years.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hurl?
Thank you. First of all, starting off, we do have graduation coming up. I think probably most people realize that. Truman this year is on Friday, May 16th, at 6:30 p.m., and all of these are on, at their respective football stadiums. Van Horn is Saturday, May 17th, at 5:00 p.m., and then Christman is Saturday, May 17th, at 6:30 p.m. And as of right now, the weather looks pretty good. So we're hoping that holds out. Also, state assessments, we just finished up the MAT assessments. That went really well. EOCs, we are just wrapping those up. Overall, it's gone exceptionally well. Probably the biggest thing that's going on right now is what's happening at Jeff City. So the budget did arrive at the governor's desk. We will see whether he does any line item vetoes. But as far as education is concerned, $53.1 billion was passed for the entirety of the budget. Few highlights for education. First of all, the foundation formula was fully funded, or the money has been passed forward for appropriation so far to the governor. Also, transportation was fully funded and the minimum teacher salary. There was $50 million that was set aside in the budget for vouchers that would be paid for from general revenue. So this is the first time Missouri has ever had vouchers that would go to private or parochial schools where general revenue would be used. Now, there is some questions about the legality of using public money, in other words, general revenue money. Previously, it had always been in the form of tax credits. So there is some question about the constitutionality of this. So we'll have to wait and see. Now, I say that about the good news regarding funding. I just want to remind everyone, number one, it is still, there's still a possibility for line item veto of things. Also, this is always based upon the appropriation. And appropriations are always subject to withholdings. And I think probably from the time I started until probably 2019, we did not have a year in which public education did not have withholdings. So it's, again, it's just an appropriation. If there is a downturn in revenues for the state, we would probably see withholdings. And there is basically a week left, a little more than, well, right at a week, not even that, of the session. And so far, we have not had an omnibus education bill that's come forward. Open enrollment, House Bill 711, it looks like it's probably dead at this point, but that doesn't mean that the open enrollment bill may not get attached somewhere else, and it very likely will. Couple of things I've heard is Senate Bill 68 could be the education omnibus bill, and then many omnibus bills, Senate Bill 266, could be the vehicle for open enrollment. So that doesn't mean it'll pass. There's going to be a flurry of activity between now and the end of the session. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the vouchers have not been challenged in court yet?
They have not. The governor has not signed the budget yet. I do fully expect that he would do that.
I'm not happy that he can see that.
Yeah, very possibly. That's all I have.
Okay, hearing no discussion, we are going to move on to the first item of business, which will be the approval of the Missouri School Boards Association membership dues for the 2025-2026 school year. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the MSBA membership dues.
Second.
Motion has a first and a second. Dr. Hurl?
Before you is the motion for MSBA dues. They total $13,510. This is the same amount as last year, and I would recommend that you would approve this.
Any discussion?
No inflation.
I just want to say I really see the value of MSBA, the free legal services, the free, the value in all of the training. Yes, this is definitely a wonderful investment.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Next item is the approval to accept quote to purchase and install playground equipment for the Thomas Hart-Benton Elementary School.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Dr. Hurl?
Thank you. Before you is the quote through the Sourcewell Co-op for playground at Thomas Hart-Benton from Next Generation Recreation. This totals $160,643.50. We were actually really pleased with this bid. I did get to question, you know, why this playground now, you know, we did have the bond issue, which we did a number of other ones. Whenever we had the bond issue, we had two elementary schools that we did not move forward at that time with the playgrounds. That was Three Trails, which we have since done, and then Benton. And that's because those were in better shape at the time. And they had work done more recently to them than some of the other playgrounds. Much like our roofs, we do fix fail on a lot of things. So as the needs arise, we went ahead and did these playgrounds. So now, every elementary school within the district has had new playgrounds, or they're such new schools that the playgrounds are very recent.
Was this the school that had some vandalism last year? We kind of found out who did it later on.
It was.
Yes, that's correct.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the accept quote to purchase two 77-passenger propane school buses. Dr. Hurl? Oh, I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Dr. Hurl?
I might actually turn this over to Dr. Stoudt.
Thank you, Dr. Hurl. Good evening, board members. The Transportation Department maintains its lead of 130 buses. And with the approval of these two buses, we will have a total of 52 propane buses. Over the past five years, we have moved toward lower emission vehicles, and we have utilized grant funding with this initiative. We're excited to share that DIASD has been awarded the DERA grant, which is the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act grant, funds totaling $61,639 per bus. As part of the grant requirements, older diesel buses must be removed and destroyed to help reduce emissions in the area. We would ask this evening that the Board of Education approve the quote from Central State's Bus Sales to the NJPA Sourcewell Co-op contract to purchase two 77-passenger propane buses in the amount of $182,940 each. And I will note, the total for the two buses without the grant would be $365,880, but with the grant will cost us $242,602. So some significant savings. And again, I thank Daryl and Jeff for their work on this continued project. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of delegates for the MOSIP Annual Meeting. I'll make that motion. Second. Dr. Hurl?
Thank you. MOSIP is the Missouri Securities Investment Program, and this is something that we use to invest our idle funds in. It also helps our bond rating. So there is a board, there's a MOSIP board that comprises financial individuals within the financial community, as well as superintendents and board members. I think Blue Springs Board Member is currently on the MOSIP board, and they meet quarterly. We do go and use our proxy vote to vote at the MOSIP.
Can you explain the value in using the proxy versus appointing someone?
Because whenever you have the Board of Directors, they're there all the time. They have the knowledge about what's going on. So they're the experts, and it, or be it for me to micromanage what they do, and they're dealing with it day to day, especially the financial analysts. So it's best to allow them to do their job.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the substitute salary guide for the 2025-2026 school year.
I move that we approve the salary guide.
Second. Dr. Hurl?
Thank you. Our, I did, or actually missing that, did present to you what all of the school districts that gave information to the cooperating school districts related to their substitute salary guides. And so you have that information. Currently, the independent school district pays $130 a day for substitute services, 145 days for a long-term assignment, which is 20 days or more. And if an individual has a teaching certificate, they are paid $160 a day. Does that work?
Yeah. Thank you for providing that comparison. In reviewing the data, I only found one district that differentiates the certified and not. And I think that was Kansas City Public Schools with the $15 difference for the long term. So it looks like most other districts do not differentiate. What is our rationale for differentiating?
So whenever you have, we'll just break it down. A regular substitute comes in, is called in on a particular day, they do not have near as many responsibilities as someone that has a 20-day responsibility. So they are not responsible for grading papers, they will not do lesson plans, or someone that has a long term that is the expectation. The ISD has rewarded those with teaching certificates. I had to ask down in HR, Rita DeLoach has been there since '98, and we've always had that, that differentiation, where we pay more for someone with a teaching certificate. And I can only speak to why I believe it probably occurred, and that is, when you get to 20 days, again, those expectations are that a teacher would be grading papers, as well as, and the big thing is that they're creating lesson plans. So we value that someone would have a teaching certificate, and they would have that training, just like our teachers who may be doing the exact same thing, two teachers side by side. Director Parente is a French teacher. I don't know if you have more than one French teacher?
Yes.
So I doubt that you're both paying the exact same amount, even though you're doing largely the same thing. And that is because people have different levels of education, as well as different years of experience. So that's why we do that.
Okay. Well, we are still not in the norm, so I do understand our speaker last month had brought a concern about that. Have we explored narrowing that gap to perhaps $150 a day for the substitute teacher certificate for long-term assignments? So that's an extra $10, and only brings them about $15 apart, which is what Kansas City Public Schools does?
We have not. If you look at what we pay on the substitute teacher, we're already at or near the top. And so that's something that we have not considered.
I would like to amend this motion to at least explore. Is it possible for us to explore what the ramifications would be budget-wise to increase that to $10 per day? I imagine that there aren't that many long-term substitutes, especially without a certificate.
I would rather the board just take action, because we do have the budget to do. It's probably not going to be that significant, but this is a document that does have to go in the budget book.
Okay. Well, then, can I make a motion to go ahead and amend it to $150 a day versus $140? I would like to make a motion to amend the Missouri substitute teachers' certificate long-term substitute assignment rate to $150 per day versus $140.
We have a first and a second for the amendment. We can vote on the amendment to the motion. And so we don't need to do that by roll call. We will do that by voice. Is that correct? All at once? Okay. All those in favor?
Have discussion?
You may have discussion.
Okay. I just, help me understand why we, why I should support this.
Well, when I was looking over the data, my microphone is on there, there was only one school district for long-term assignments that differentiated between a teacher certificate or a substitute teacher certificate in their pay for their long-term assignment. I would argue that they do largely pretty close to the same work. I still value those with a teacher certificate, and which is why I would, there would still be a $15 bump per day for those people with a teacher certificate. But we are the only ones, besides Kansas City Public Schools, and they only have a $15 difference. So I'm just asking us to be more in line with, closer to what nearly everybody in this data set does.
I would like to point out that Fort Osage is different as well. They have a retired teacher sub, so a retired teacher would have a teaching certificate as well.
Okay. Well, and they didn't offer a long-term rate, and that's $15 difference.
Which would put their long-term at $130 as well.
Okay. And that's another $15 separation then.
Well, I'm wondering why we make a decision like this without looking down at the budget first. I don't have the facts, but I'd rather wait and let you have a look at the budget first, and we can, you know, be able to see what we're getting. I don't think you'd be able to talk, but I think we can talk to each other. And if that's something we can do later, if we can see what the [inaudible]. I would be delighted with that, and just asking you.
I would be in favor of that as well. The one thing that does worry me is the precedent of, and, you know, we always want to do whatever we can for all of our employees, but just because someone comes forward, you know, are we going to nitpick at each salary guide? So I would recommend to stay with what was presented last month.
So just a point of clarity, once the budget is set, I mean, do we, can we actually go back and amend it?
You can. It's something, I would not recommend a salary schedule amendment. The only time we would typically do that is if we receive something in the form of federal funds, where they put some guidelines in that we would receive funds for a media raise. That usually happens like the end start and such.
Okay. So is this something that we are aware of that is a greater concern for maybe more than persons who've spoken about this publicly? Is this something that we have actual data on that would be meaningful to make that change tonight?
Again, I would go with the original recommendation.
I mean, I do think that, I mean, there's a sub shortage everywhere, so there is certainly a need to continue to look at that annually. And I would venture to say that most districts are asking teachers to cover during their plan period every day. So they're not getting a sub in every building. And that's just the reality of what's going on right now. So to have somebody that is doing long-term like that, we certainly want to make sure that we are staying competitive.
I would say that I do think that is crucial, that we consider the fact that someone may have a degree, and we would want them to be drawn to us because of that degree. I mean, right now, we know that they've lowered the standards for people to become substitute teachers, and so it's, anybody can do that. Not all of us are, have gone to college and obtained degrees, and I think that we should honor that. I also do feel like we have to keep in mind that not only do we pay a substitute teacher to come in and cover, but we also have to pay that teacher's salary that's taking the day off. So it's not like at my job, when I'm gone, nobody is covering for me, and I come back and I do my job. We are talking about paying two salaries on the same day. So we need to be conscientious of budget, and I respect that Dr. Hurl has brought to us a salary that he feels like we can handle with our substitute teachers, no matter how many people on any given day are coming in to be a sub.
I know frequently, like during negotiations, if something, you know, was not agreed upon on one side or the other, we will come back, you know, and look at it the next year. I would be in favor of, because all of this has been put together in the salary guides to this point, I would be in favor of maybe looking at it for next year, and just try to keep that in our minds and remember that for next year.
A point of clarity, is the substitute salary guide part of negotiation?
It is not part of negotiations.
When I look over this, it appears to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the certificated long-term, the 165, is very close to the top. I think I only see one that's more than that, but.
There's, pardon? I'm sorry, there are a couple, like [inaudible] is 225.
Okay. So two, you're saying? I saw one, I didn't see two, but anyway. The 140, however, it looks like that that one is not at the top of the long term. So it would seem to me like that raising that to 150, it still rewards teachers for having the certificate, but maybe creates a little bit more incentive, and maybe might make it a little bit easier to get substitute teachers.
And then you still have the 165 to reward the official, you know, teaching certificate, or rather, as opposed to the substitute.
And my thought on that is, again, you know, is this going to be a normal thing where anytime someone is unhappy with their particular salary guide, they're approaching the Board of Education? Because while our salary, our sub rate is near the top, we have others that are not as high. You know, this is probably close to the 80th percentile. So is this something that the board is going to entertain from the DIAS requirement?
And I think it's just helpful to have the data. We didn't have the data when it was brought to us and when, so I was thankful that that person came and spoke to us. So yes, it is helpful to know what other school districts are doing. And so I'm grateful to have this spreadsheet so that I could review it myself. Sorry, Anthony, go ahead.
No, I appreciate the information, and I don't want to send a message that, you know, we're personalizing any of this at all. I appreciate the information, and I think this is a good sign to our community that we do value what they're saying. It doesn't mean that we're going to make changes immediately or at all, but we do hear you when you come to speak, and I think that that needs to be the emphasis, that this is why we're elected, to actually make decisions that do positively, positively impact this district. So I can't say that I'm the expert on this subject, but I definitely want to make sure that whatever direction we go in, it's the right direction. And so, yeah.
Dr. Hurl, would you have a feel for whether we have any difficulty filling our long-term subs? Is that an area where we have a plethora of people, or?
I don't think anyone has a plethora of subs. I mean, we have instituted some things that a lot of districts don't, like we have priority subs. And those are subs, basically, they're in that one single building all year long. So we've done some things like that. Now, if the board would entertain it, what I believe is what the best practice would be, is for us to go back and put an RFP out like we had previously to look at subservices and bringing those in and see about a company doing this.
So I do remember us looking at that earlier, and I thought that it turned out that it wasn't going to be as cost-effective for us. Am I not remembering that correctly?
Well, I don't think we could determine that, but based upon, you know, discussions like this, I think it would be something that we need to at least put the RFP out again and look at bringing in a subservice company.
Do you remember what month we did that? Was it in the fall of last year?
Dr. Stoudt, do you remember?
I don't know. I want to say it was in [inaudible]. I can't, I can't. It's a long time ago. I think it was that?
I feel like the new board members were on the board when we did that, so I feel like.
I would say maybe May. I think it was pretty quick after. I think it was either April or May. I think my recommendation is if this is the route we're going to go, is that we do keep the sub-salary as it is, and then we do look at putting in RFP, if nothing else to get the information.
Any more discussion? Okay, so right now, we are voting on the amendment to item number five. And so all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Nay. The motion, did we have four?
Yes.
The motion carries. And then now we need to vote on the approval of the substitution.
I would like some clarification. Is the board okay if we go ahead and put an RFP out?
I don't think it ever hurts. I don't think it ever hurts to do an RFP.
Clintie, did you, not to spotlight you, but did you have any feedback there at all? This is your motion.
Doing an RFP? Um, no, I was just looking to see, it wasn't in May, to see when it was, because if it was less than a year ago, is it necessary to do so?
With inflation, we would still want to do an RFP.
So prices would probably be higher than with inflation, saying that, because we haven't raised our substitute rate, what were we in, 23, 24? haven't raised our substitute rate, what were we in, 23, 24? So I would assume that it would just be a bigger gap with inflation and ours is staying the same.
Which is why you do the RFP. It'll be inflation, so, right?
Okay. Moving on to item number five, we need to approve the substitute salary guide for the 2025, 2026 school year, which included the amendment. All those in favor, any discussion?
Would you just refresh me on what the amendment specifically?
The amendment was just to raise the long-term substitute assignment to 150. So it's 165 for a Missouri teacher's certificate, and it's 150 for a Missouri substitute teacher's certificate, and who have completed the district's training program.
Okay, so it didn't, okay, I thought it was, go back to check it out, budget first?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the compilation of communications from the March Board meeting, planning, and snow day makeup. Director Parinte. Oh, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the compilation of communications from March Board meeting, planning, and snow day makeup.
Director Parinte. This was brought forward by you, so do you have anything you'd like to say about it?
I am, I feel like that's a reasonable ask now, and would like to move forward with the approval.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Director Wintee, can you kind of elaborate on the type of information that you're looking for and why you would like to see this information, just so we can be a little bit more clear about what we're trying to accomplish with that?
It seems to me that there was confusion about what counted as hours, what didn't, so I just wanted to see the communication, to see what's expected of the employees. And I do feel like that was very different, depending on buildings too, and just would like to make sure that next time, if this were to happen, that we have our employees feeling more valued and respected.
Do you feel that that could be accomplished with some kind of directive or board message? Or do you feel like it's necessary to see those emails first to determine if it's needed? I'm just trying to understand the thought process.
I think it's important to see them just to understand better, even for multiple employees, like, because it is complicated and what counts as your work, depending on whether you're a teacher, a para, a recovery room interventionalist. So that, I think, will help better understand and see what we could change about it. And I do feel like the results we had with the first request proved that there was clearly a lot of communication going on, and it just really proves the importance of this amongst our staff.
If I could add a few things, one, the first request was so broad, which is why it came back like it did. It all comes down to the keywords that are put into the search, so that was why. You know, we have, I have my cabinet here, who would be subject to the request. And so, you know, my concern is anytime that a board member is upset about a decision that's made by a cabinet member, or even worse, a principal at a building, or a teacher. So is this something that is going to be practiced, that the board is going to request emails? And then does the board feel that it would be appropriate if me, as superintendent, just asked for teacher emails, which is something I don't do? So I think that's something to consider. And, you know, with that information is, is the board wanting to set the way in which we handle snow days and snow makeup and the communication and the planning? So I think that's something that needs to be considered, especially in light of, you know, the cabinet who is, whose emails would be sunshine.
Does this request include principals, like communication from principals to their staff? You mentioned that there was possibly a discrepancy. I didn't know if that included principals to teachers.
That was not in the original request.
It was in, it said specifically the cabinet members. But I think that does cover your different positions, so.
Dr. Earl, does public relations sit on the cabinet?
Yes.
So I was understanding that public relations was the one that sent out the correspondence indicating how the district was going to handle those snow days.
That went out district law, yes.
So it was kind of focused from one individual who sent it out to all the parties? So it wasn't like, you know, we had 10 different people communicating how it was going to handle, it was the one person that disseminated all of that? Is that correct?
That went out to the district, yes, but certainly cabinet members received, you know, many emails from, you know, just questions from particularly teachers or just any employee. So, and then I think that's part of it, is how would employees feel that their emails are being looked at by board members?
I think just hearing this discussion, I guess, I think we should be conscious and careful that our emails can be reviewed by virtually, you know, anyone who sunshines it. So hopefully that's a thought process that we keep on a day-to-day basis regardless of whether a director's requesting it or not. I want to trust that, you know, obviously the efforts of the directors here to come to a solid, sound decision, and I'm not sure who's upset, or if that's even the correct operative term here. I want to obviously be supportive, if I can, to getting down to the base of what we're doing this for. So really kind of aligning with Denise's question, does this capture what it is that you're seeking to get, and then what benefit, or what does it serve? What conclusion can we get to from this information?
That's what I feel like I was trying to explain. I do think that us looking at those expectations that were, whether they were clear or not, so we can make sure next time our employees do feel valued and respected, and when we have to pivot and change because of snow days, that we know that they're doing their job, and that we can respect those hours that they have to put in, most of the time when they are extra hours because of the changes we have to make.
So you're just needing context? It sounds like you just want to have some context to how decisions were made in the discussion.
I'd like to say something. I respect everybody's opinion, but I think this is micromanaging, as was the previous amendment on the previous motion. And I think, you know, we have to act as a board with policies and procedures, but I think a lot of this, snow days was dramatized by social media in Eastern Jack with all the school districts. Every parent was talking about it, what they were doing here and what they were doing there. And I trust our board and our superintendent to act in a proficient manner, and I think they have, but I think, you know, on this kind of thing with the weather, which no one has control over, has got carried away in the wind of conversations and emails and everything, so I do not think this is necessary, and I don't think it's prudent for the board to act in this manner at all.
This one's, for me, extremely difficult, because I do think that the board needs to have information, and I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to try to act and to try to get processes that are in the best interest of our patrons and our staff. But I guess, I feel like that if the goal is to try to make sure that we have smooth communication and that we don't have some of the glitches that we had this time, I think that there's probably better ways to do that than to review individual emails. I'm just not sure how that's going to accomplish the end goal in the most respectful way. That's just kind of the way I see it.
Okay, what are the better ways to approach that?
I guess I would look at it as more of a, what do we need to do on a top-level approach? I mean, one of the things I really appreciated was the compromise last month about doing the five days that are scheduled and as makeup days, and then after that, then we would look at virtual. I felt like that was a good compromise. So I guess I look at it as if we can look at things more on a top level, what would we like to see that communication look like? You know, some kind of a message from the board or direct from the board? And then let the administration follow that as their guide for making those, rather than to try to find what they did that we maybe don't like. I feel like it needs to stay their job, but maybe we need to have some input or some, like, high level, and this is what we kind of like to see happen, or some parameters that we'd like to see. I don't know if I'm even explaining that well, but that's kind of my vision.
Maybe if we knew about it before it went out.
And that's an excellent point, maybe on information that is going to be controversial or affect a large number, maybe, you know, just being aware of it ahead of time might solve a lot of questions, I don't know. I think that's an excellent point, Director Parinte.
But I would like to point out, we, while this was more days than in the past, in the past, we did make up snow days. So this was not different, just more of, and we complied with the law, which is the most important thing. And I think that's all lost in this, is everything that we did, we complied with the law. And you look at when we are getting out, we're getting out the 23rd, you look at our neighbors, that is not the case. I think people forget some of that.
I appreciate your sharing that, but I think what we're really looking at here is do we look at the emails or not? So I'm not sure, thank you for sharing that, but I'm not sure how that helps us to decide whether we should see those emails or not.
I guess for me, I know that one board member isn't entitled to see any documentation or have any reports run, that's a policy that we have, without the consent of the board. I think that we need to remember that all board members are entitled to the same information. And I feel like, I think that it would set a precedent if we just pay for this sunshine request that has happened through a board member, just so that they can see, you know, what the communication looked like. I really don't feel like this is an area that we should be going into. I'm conscious of precedent being set, and I just don't want to set that for the future.
To clarify, this would just be employee work at times, right? We're not writing a check for $179.30.
That's correct, but there is a cost associated with the work done.
And I won't speak for Director Parinte, but I think part of the reason why this came about is that in seeking information and understanding of how the decisions were made on how staff would be asked to make up those days, it wasn't forthcoming, and so this was an attempt to find out what actually was decided and when, because there was so much confusion with staff. Oh, you can do weekends, oh, you can't, oh, like, it just felt very unsure, and different buildings had different understandings of what the rules and the policies were, and so I think this is an attempt to ensure that we understand how that happened and why that happened, and how we can prevent that from going forward.
It was really an attempt at perspective. I just am trying to look from all angles and understand everyone's place.
Any more discussion?
I really like your approach to this, Denise, where what I feel like I was hearing you get to was maybe we look at this as a moment of growth, an opportunity for us to say, okay, let's do something different going forward, opposed to having people's personal emails revealed, whatever message that could send. I hope that it sends a message that we are willing to get down to the nitty-gritty to find out fact-based information and that be it, and not that we are trying to do anything further than what we were elected to do, which is make good decisions. And sometimes that gets blurred, it gets really challenging to do that when you don't have substance, when you don't have fact-based information, and you just have emotions and what you hope to do, or what you hope people see or recognize in your behavior or your decisions. And so it's really complicated sometimes to find which position you want to take in these issues. I don't ever want to make a decision that gives anyone reason to feel like they're not trusted, but I also don't like to feel like I'm demonstrating that I don't trust you because I'm asking to verify what I trust. And I think that that's a balance that we want to just be very clear about. If I ask for the fact or the evidence, it's not because I don't trust you, it's because I'm respecting the position that I've been elected to fill. And I would appreciate not having to hear and feel that I'm not trusting administration or I'm questioning integrity. And so I just want to, I want to throw that out there and have this kind of...
Point of clarification, I don't think anybody was assuming that, or nobody inferred that, so.
I believe that that was inferred very clearly, so we don't have to agree on that, but I stand by my statements tonight, and hopefully that we can take that back and consider that when we make statements, when we make statements in open session. So I think where we are is just really making this decision on whether or not we want to do this, so.
And I think going forward, we need to be very cognizant about what level are we going to do this? You know, how far down are we going to drill? And how far into the weeds are we going to get? That's not our job, in my opinion, yeah.
I agree, Jill, and I have to, I have to speak to that. I think, too, we have to consider what has existed long-term beyond us drilling down to things and getting out of the scope of a director. We also have to be cognizant of, if we continue to hear certain rationales and lived experiences, there's something that we have to engage, we have to do something. And that doesn't mean micromanage, but that does mean speak to it and get some answers. So again, it's just really important that we not, we don't need to be in a box up here if we're doing reasonable things, it's not that we're asking unreasonable questions.
Yeah, I think a reasonable response would have been, though, just to simply ask Dr. Earl to provide the information, and instead it came through a sunshine request.
I did simply ask, and the question was not answered. I just said, can I, can you please share the information that was sent to staff?
I think we're going to go ahead and call for a vote. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion failed. Next item is the approval for the changes to the Board of Education policies, first reading.
I move that we approve the Board of Education policy changes, first reading.
Second. Dr. Earl.
I am going to turn this over to Ed Council. We have Madeline Garrett and Dwayne Martin with us this evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I don't think so. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. In your board packet, you'll see that there are four different policies with changes. I have been working with the district, specifically the EGS point of contact, Dr. Lance Stout, on these changes, so I'm just going to run through those. The first policy in your packet is visitors to district property and events, which is The changes are on the last page in the second to last section. This is just to clarify prohibitions for visitors on campus, to also include alcohol and illegal substances. These are currently prohibited on property, district transportation or any functions, or district-sponsored events. So we add that, we added that in there for clarity. The second policy in your packet is E300...
The second policy in your packet is E300P, teacher union representation. All of these changes are based on the INEA third addendum to that collective bargaining agreement, which the board approved at the March 11th meeting. So the policy now aligns with that agreement. The third policy we have is purchasing, F140P. All of these changes here are to align with district procedures and practices. And those are in basically the first two pages of that policy. The last policy is G235P. Board member elections. And in the last section, we included the statutory exception for when the number of candidates have, who have files equal to the number of positions open. Usually you don't have to have an election for that, but if you also have an issue on the ballot, such as bond or levy, then those board members will also be on that election ballot. So that is a statutory exception, and we included that in there to clarify that as well.
Can I ask a question? So my understanding that that last change was required by state law, that we have to do that to have an election, if there's only the number of candidates as there are positions, if there's another item on the thing, we have no choice about that.
Correct.
My question would be, is there a way to word that so that if the state legislature changed that to where that wasn't required? Because I'm thinking that it's quite expensive to run an election, and we're putting something here in policy, is there a way to word it so that if that were to change, then we could go back to not having to do that?
So anytime there are any changes to statute, as part of our EGS services, we will present those to the district and the board so that it aligns with the new legislation. So it may not be in a spring update, it might be at another time when that change would go into effect.
So it's kind of a self-correcting situation, I guess?
Yes, yeah, whenever new law comes out, we would present that as part of the EGS services, so it aligns with the law.
We need to talk to our legislators.
Yes.
Um, I had a couple of questions. For F140P, what was the rationale for increasing the amount needed for board approval from 75,000 to 150,000?
That act, I can answer that. That came from a recommendation from Marty Gardner, who is our Director of Business Operations. It is actually less than what she had asked, and it's substantially less than federal guidelines.
What are federal guideline?
250,000.
So it was a recommendation, is there context to why it was made?
I think just because of the sheer amount of work that goes into each, each piece. You know how much, how expensive things are getting, it doesn't take very much to hit some of these thresholds.
I would just add, too, that the committee talked about that a little bit, and the 150 was kind of our compromise between what Marty really wanted and the 75,000. So we were trying to give her a little bit, but still have some fiduciary responsibility there.
And also along the, that's those same lines, the increase from 3,500 to 10,000 for general purchasing procedure, which would not include superintendent approval, assuming it's the same Marty Gardner?
And I, I say Marty Gardner, but I'm also going to put Greg McKee in that.
Um, for C155P, the banning of alcohol and illegal substances, what was the reason for adding that? Because that's also in student handbooks and everything, correct? In the teacher handbook and employee handbooks?
Correct. So this is, of course, is prohibited, but we wanted to make sure that it was in the policy for visitors as well, so it had that clarity.
Okay, so everyone is under it, was the goal?
Just to, yeah, clarify that.
Um, I would also, I know this isn't included this time, but I would like to make a motion to also include C140B, public comment to the board, in this approval of Board of Education policy changes, first reading, to remove the agenda requirement and to remove the deadline for public speakers.
A motion has been made to amend the, an amendment to the motion. And she'd like to add.
C140B.
Can I ask a point of clarification before you get a second? Are, can we look at items that end in a B, right, B as in boy right now, or can we only look at items that end in a P as in party?
From my perspective, I'm presenting on policy changes, there are, of course, there is a corresponding policy to that. I know the district has a process of presenting policy changes, which would be required if C140B is going to be changed. We can, my end, I'm happy to make any changes after going through the process and getting direction from the board to make policy changes, so.
We would do the policies here, and then we have a schedule, the B, which would be the board, I believe that's September, Denise. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Steph? Oct, August, September?
Is, is there a C140P? Did I just use the wrong?
Yes, there is a C140P policy. The B that you're referring to is from the board.
Well, yeah, I would like to amend, I apologize for my mistake, C140P to remove the agenda requirement and to remove the deadline requirement for public speakers.
Second. Having a first and second, is there a, any discussion?
I know this, I know this is something that we've discussed before, just this last time, and my understanding is that we might look at the board manual and change it so that we can only bring up policies within a certain timeframe, once they're voted down, but that does not exist yet, so I wanted to bring it up tonight.
Is there another school district that you know of that doesn't have a policy that exists?
I have, yes, back in 2021, I presented it to the board as a person out in the audience, of all the different speaking requirements, and we are some of the most stringent. So that's why it would be nice to allow public speakers to come and share emergent talk, topics with us, because if it's already on the agenda, we already know about it, but they might have something that they need to share about us. And if it's, and also to remove the deadline, so that they, if something happens on a Tuesday that they feel that they need to talk about, they still can, or even on a Monday, or on a Saturday, or a Sunday, with our deadline on Friday.
So I, I just think about doing this and then having to reconsider it later, because 10 people show up to talk about apple juice and rice, whatever.
Well, and our deadlines, I mean, like, our, I'm not changing the amount of time, so it would still be the 30-minute limit that exists currently.
I feel like the city does sit that way, is that right?
Most public entities do.
Okay, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Oh, this is the amendment, yes, we're voting on the amendment. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion does not carry. So now we are back to the motion at hand, which is the approval of the Board of Education policies, policy changes, first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Missouri State Statute for Legal Matters, 610.021, paragraph one, and personnel issues, 610.021, paragraph three, and 610.021, paragraph 13.
Second. We are adjourned. Oh, sorry, call the roll. Yes.
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 We're adjourned.